Thank you, and I, you don't know much, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to this group. I have a great appreciation for Lee Summitt R7 school system and as a good example of how popular I think our school is. Last Sunday afternoon at Lee Summitt High School, we had 565 people came back for the golden reunion that we have every other year. And we had people there from more than 10 states that came back for that. And there's great enthusiasm and people always want to come back to Lee Summitt and talk about the old days when we went to school in Lee Summitt. And I'm going to relate a little bit of, I think I was asked probably to talk about Longview Farm and I grew up on an old country farm just about three miles down the road to the east here off of Prior Road. And I never did live on Longview Farm, but my parents didn't work for Longview, but yet we went to a one-room country school here on Longview Road called Cedar Hill School. And Longview at that time, the farm itself was in three different school districts. It was in Lee Summitt, Hickman Mills, and Grandview. So we had kids here at Longview that attended other schools other than Lee Summitt. But back in 19, I graduated from Lee Summitt High School in 1948. But prior to that time, the year before that, we consolidated 16 little rural school districts in Greenwood into the R7 district. And I'm going to relate a little bit about Dr. Campbell and the influence that he had on this community. You know, I, somebody asked me one time, what one person had more to do with shaping the Lee Summitt community into what it is than any other one person? And I would absolutely say Dr. B.C. Campbell, who was our superintendent. He's a legend here in Lee Summitt and the whole area. And I was fortunate to have him as a history teacher when we were in high school. And then he became a superintendent. And then I was fortunate enough to serve on the school board. And at the time, he retired and he was a dear, dear friend. He had a remarkable ability of being able to sum things up. And his analysis on everything that we discussed was always kids first. And I always thought that was a great philosophy, whatever we did. You know, he had his office down in the old Lee Summitt, what is now the Lee Summitt Elementary School. And in those days, it was an old dilapidated building and his office was up on the second story and there was steps to get up there and old creaky steps. And people would come from other districts and we would talk to him about saying, guys, wouldn't it be nice to have a nice Board of Education building or have something, you know, more elaborate than this for people to come here and see? And he would always say, well, you know, kids come first. And you know, he was superintendent here for 31 years. We never had a defeat of a bond or a levy election in the 31 years that he was here. So I think that was a great testimony to the people in the community. And his philosophy was, you know, we don't need to do everything at one time, but we need to tell people what we're going to do with the money and do exactly what we tell them we're going to do, and then they'll support us the next time we're ready for going to the vote. So he had a remarkable ability of being able to relate to people. And he believed in having citizen involvement in everything. And I know you guys still do, and that's great. But we had a citizen advisory committee here in town that was made up of, we had 60 or 70 people and we'd get together at least once a month. And I had the pleasure, I guess, of serving as chairman of that group for about 10 years. And in that time, Lee Summitt was a little old town of 2,000 people. We didn't grow, we just stayed the same. And there's pictures that, you know, they take a census every 10 years and how many people are now. We're now officially certainly about 103,000 in this town and we're destined for more great growth in Lee Summitt. But Dr. Campbell was a, he had a son and a daughter. Jack, his son, was a, became a lawyer and was a state representative at one time. But one of the things that I was always impressed with Dr. Campbell was his wife Sarah had MS and developed it a long, long time ago. And she was in a wheelchair for years, but she always had a smile on her face. And they never missed anything in town. They were at every basketball game, every football game. And Sarah was always wonderful to talk to and just, of all the people that I remember around Lee Summitt as having an influence on developing a community, I probably would say, you know, that's the number one person. So I know you didn't ask me to come and speak about that today, but I had to get in my licks on that. As I mentioned, I grew up on an old farm about three miles over to the, on Prior Road. And my folks, we lived on a poor dairy farm and there were six of us kids in the family. And Dr. Campbell, not only, another thing I might mention, Dr. Buck, he was the first school bus driver we ever had. We didn't have a school bus in Lee Summitt. And during the war, the Methodist Church bought an old red, white, and blue bus that they used to transport people back and forth to church. And they loaned that to the school district. And so we started picking up people that lived more than three miles away from school. And Dr. Campbell drove the bus. And we were the, we were not that far out, but we were the first on and the last off. We'd ride for an hour or more on the bus. When you stop and think about picking up people that, up where Lakewood is now and out where Tarsie Lake is, out east of town and a lot of one in that area. And he made two runs every day to pick up people and bring them in. So that's, I always thought was an interesting thing. He not only, you know, served in every capacity you could imagine, but was always so disciplined in the way he did it. I never saw him get mad at anybody. He always thought he was a consummate politician because he got to every meeting that went on in this town and anything that happened, he was a part of it. After he retired, he told me one day, he said, now I know why people move away when they retire because you guys are working me to death now. You've got me on every committee and, you know, he was active in the MedCon, the library board, and he was involved in everything. But so much for Dr. Campbell. But I mentioned again that I went to a little one-room country school here and, on Longview Road, up the road here a little ways. This farm was actually laid out and built in 1913, 1914. R.A. Long is the one that built Longview Farm and the Long Bell Lumber Company. The millionaires, it seemed like in those days, were lumber dealers. And he grew up on a farm down in Kentucky and came to Kansas City and got into the lumber business. And it was estimated that he was worth $50 million at that time. And they had a place in Kansas City, it's in their Corinthian Hall, if any of you know where that is. And the Kansas City Museum is there now. That was the Long Bell, I mean, R.A. Long's family home, that's where they lived. Then after he built this, and he had two daughters, Lula Long Combs, and that's the one that I knew the best, and then she had a sister Sally. And Lula and her husband did not have any children, but her sister Sally had five children and her husband was a career military guy and they traveled all over the world. So they were not here very much at the farm. But I had occasion to realize what a significant, great person Mrs. Combs was. She had no kids of her own, but she looked after every kid in the community. The people that lived here on the farm, and they, Longview had about 200 employees on the farm. And their kids, in those days, we had, you know, big families. And she used to refer to the kids that lived here on the farm as her termite gang. And she would have them down at the mansion, you know, picking up sticks and pulling out weeds and, you know, landscaping and helping all the time. And yet she looked after kids, not only, you know, the kids that lived here on the farm, but those of us in the community. The Longview Chapel, the church right down the road here, was kind of a gathering place for everybody in this community. And I remember coming there to 4H meetings in the basement of there, there would have, farmers would have meetings there. And she would always have a Christmas service there. And all the kids in the community that would came in, whether they lived on Longview Farm or just came in, she would make sure that everybody had a present at Christmas time and we always had a welcome place to go. This farm was, originally was about 1,780 acres of land. And it was estimated that when they bought this land, and the amazing thing is, they built the farm in two years' time, everything was finished. Can you imagine, just, he just bought little rural farms here. And most of the farms in those days were relatively small farms. They were, you know, 80 to 120 acres was the average size farm around this area. And most of the farms in this area were dairy farms. But he had this dream of making this the world's most beautiful farm. And believe me, it was. I mean, they had the Longview big entrances coming in to, on Longview Road each way and welcome to Longview. It had its own water system, it had electricity long before anybody else thought about having electricity around. And it had all the amenities you could imagine. It was a very diversified farm. He had, when he developed this, he had hogs, they had cattle, they had obviously horses. And the original Longview Farm was probably most noted for its gated horses. And then later on, I'm going to talk about the Hackney horses that Lula showed. But, and then the only thing that really was a moneymaker on the farm was the greenhouse. There were two big greenhouses that sat right down the other side of the mansion here. And believe it or not, they sold orchids out of there. They raised orchids, they sold those orchids. People would come from everywhere to get orchids from Longview Greenhouse. And there were a lot of, there were actually 66 buildings in the original Longview Building Program. That included a hotel that sat down south of the mansion here that's now underwater or the land where it was underwater. They had a hotel there where guests could come and stay. And people came from everywhere to see this farm. There were 25 miles of board fencing around this farm. And that wasn't in the days when we had the white vinyl plastic fence. It was a board fence and there wasn't a nail put in any of those posts. They set these posts and they had them grooved out and had the rails beveled so they would fit into a notch in those posts. And he had seven or eight people that worked full-time just maintaining this fence. Can you imagine keeping that much, 25 miles of this fence painted and in good shape all the time? There was always, you know, something to do with the fences. And this farm was, I mentioned, a diversified farm. They used to sell the hogs. And then the big thing they had going for a long time was it was noted as a premier dairy farm. Jersey cattle were one of the dairy breeds that Longview specialized in. And they were world famous for their Jersey cattle here. And they had, in the old days, I've heard my dad talk about visiting with some of the people that worked here on Longview Farm. That was before we had milking machines. And they used to milk these cows by hand. And each guy would be assigned 30 cows to milk twice a day, seven days a week. And if you don't think that's a pretty good show of milking a cow before we had milking machines. Nowadays, we not only have milking machines, but we're milking cows with robot milkers now. But the people that lived here on Longview Farm, and we were fortunate to be able to go to school down here at Cedar Hill School with Roy Buell was the farm manager here. And he had four boys that were really outstanding, great kids, and we all went to school together. And I have some things I made up here and I don't have enough copies, but I'll hand them out and you guys in a little while can look through them. It's just kind of a general history of things, but it shows the kids that we had going to Longview School and, I mean, the Cedar Hill School. The thing that was kind of unique about in the old days, many of the employees here at Longview Farm came up here from Green Forest, Arkansas. That seemed to be sort of a rallying place that they recruited a lot of the employees to come here. And the going wage in the Depression days was pretty low. About a dollar a day was considered the going wage. But the people that worked here on Longview Farm got a place to live, you know, meat, milk, and food and a dollar a day. So that tells you what the economic conditions were. The Depression had a great effect on, and R.A. Long built this farm, and I mentioned, he was, had a supposed worth of $50 million at that time. And he spent $2.5 million building the whole Longview Farm. There's 66 buildings that were here and everything. The red stucco building roofs that were on these. And can you imagine, you know, we have houses now that individual houses costing a million or $2 million, but this whole thing was built for $2.5 million. But the Depression came on and then the World War II had some effect on things too. And when, when R.A. Long died in 1934, he was nearly broke. And the farm had a, after he died, they had a dispersal sale and sold most of the animals that were here on the farm. And then Roy Buell, when he was manager, he tried raising some Hereford cattle here on the farm. And after a few years, that was not a very successful financial venture. Again, the greenhouse was still going, it would make a little bit of money, and that was it. But, so they finally started just leasing out the farm. And in fact, I know my brother and a friend of his leased quite a bit of the farm here and they had, you know, running cattle here and pasturing on it. But there were so many things that went with Longview Farm that added to this community. There was a racetrack just to the east of us here, about a few hundred yards. They had a quarter-mile racetrack. We used to have horse races there. They had, people would come from everywhere. Mrs. Combs was a great animal lover, Lulu I'm talking about. And they had people come here for the horse shows and we had a stadium down there that would seat 1,000 people in the infield of that thing. All of us kids in the neighborhood would get together and play softball in the summertime down in the immediate part of that. And then they had what they called the mule barn that sat down to the south here. And see, in the old days, they started this farm long before tractors were used. And they were farmed with mules. They had as many as 50 teams of mules when they had that big old barn. And there was a huge big loft in that barn. And we used to get together and play basketball every, every Sunday afternoon. All the kids in the community would get together and we'd play ball down there. So Longview provided a, you know, a place for all of us to enjoy life and go on with everything. And Mrs. Combs also had a lake just over to the, off of Sampson Road. And kids used to come there, we could fish there all the time. And I was never a fisherman, but my, a couple of my brothers were. And I grew up in a family of six kids, as I mentioned. And I never envisioned when I was a kid growing up here in the Longview area that I would ever be coming back and doing what I do. Mrs. Combs had a, was a great, great person. And, you know, I just could never say enough good things about her. As you all probably know, there's one of the great horses she has is buried right out east of here, Revelation. And she used to name all of her good horses, they would end their name with I-O-N. We had Revelation, Citation. And one of the guys that were working here said, now when are we going to name one Constipation? And I will never forget coming here, when I came back from veterinary school, I went to MU and came back here in 1956. And the veterinarian who had taken care of Mrs. Combs's horses had been in practice in Kansas City and on Holmes Road, Dr. Ed Ebert. And when he took a job at the, when the vet school started at MU in 1950, one of the things that he was allowed to do was to come back and treat Mrs. Combs's horses. She was very special and, you know, and also Ed Ebert had a great love for what she was doing here. But when I got into the clinical years at the vet school, and I would come back up with Dr. Ebert when he'd come up here to treat horses. And he told Mrs. Combs one day, he said, now as soon as Bud graduates from vet school and comes back to Lee Summitt, he's going to start doing your work. I'm not going to be coming back anymore. And boy, did that put the pressure on me. About the first day I was in practice, she had one of her good horses had a case of colic, which is a pretty serious thing. He was true to his word. He didn't come back, but I had him on the phone three or four times talking to him about what I should do. And I'll never forget, she always had this barn right here full of the real good show horses, but other horses that didn't have a show potential, they just turned them out in a pasture down here by the, by the blacksmith shop in the mule barn. And they were never handled, they just spent the rest of their life there. Well, about the first summer I was in practice, we had one of our good horses here develop what we call sleeping sickness, which is encephalitis and it's transmitted by mosquitoes. And we, there was a vaccine just being developed at that time. And I told her about that and I said, we ought to try vaccinating them. And she said, sure, let's do it. So we vaccinated all of our good horses and she said, well, this would be a, if it's that serious, we ought to just go ahead and vaccinate all those horses that are running out in the pasture down here. Well, it must have been 50 or more of those. They weren't broke, they couldn't handle them at all. But thank goodness, she had some great trainers here. She brought her trainers over from England. You know, Johnny Haffey and Dave Smith and Charlie Bishop were all great, great people. And I'll never forget what a ordeal that was. Thank goodness, that was before the days we had tranquilizers or dating drugs and all. And, you know, they'd end up roping those horses and, you know, tie them up for me and I'd get a shot. We had to get an intradermal vaccine at that point for sleeping sickness. And nowadays, that's a routine thing. That's part of the vaccine we use on all the horses on a, you know, on a regular basis. But Mrs. Combs not only had a great love for horses, she had a great love for dogs. And she had all kinds of dogs. If you'll see her picture, usually she was showing Hackneys are not a riding horse. Hackneys are a driving horse. And they would either drive in a single car or in a duel with a team. And she'd always have a little Boston Terrier sitting in the seat with her when she was driving. And she was so famous for showing horses. She used to go to England and show there. She showed all of the United States. She was included in the equitation hall of fame in Madison Square Garden. And for her horsemanship and for her beauty and being able to do things. But I'll never forget at the American Royal, and I had an opportunity to serve there for 50 years as a veterinarian for the American Royal. And when she would come into that show ring, I mean, the crowd was just captivated. She'd come in and have a little Boston Terrier sitting beside her there and the crowd would just go wow when she would start around the ring. And, but she not only loved horses, but she loved those dogs. And she had at one time, I remember going down to the mansion and one night on an emergency call on one of her dogs and went up there on the second story. And every dog had his own bed and they put clean sheets on the bed for him to sleep on every night. And there were 13 dogs up there that night. She had two big old Irish Wolfhounds that used to run all over the farm here, but she had all kinds of dogs. And then she used to have, not only that, but she would have charity events to raise money for giving to Wayside Waves or charities like that that took care of dogs. But she had a fellow that, Red Johnson, who was kind of her chauffeur that used to around. And she used to send him into our clinic. When I came back here in 56, she'd send dogs in to have treated. But I have been, that mansion here was, Lee Summitt never had a country club, but we always used the mansion as the country club of Lee Summitt. And I've been to every kind of an event down there. We've had weddings there at the mansion, we've had Chamber of Commerce used to meet there. We've had all kinds of meetings and still have, you know, meetings going on there. Of the 66 original buildings that were built here on the Longview Farm, there were about six of those were designated for historical preservation. And unfortunately, we've only had three so far that have made it that far. We've still got the old big old dairy barn setting up here on the north side of Longview Road. We've got the manager's house and then the general office buildings there that were supposed to be historic preserve. But I'll never forget Tony Sandsbury was the superintendent of schools here in Lee Summitt. I was on the school board. John Wazniewski was the architect, he was with Hollis and Miller. And so David Gale had started developing Longview Farm at that time. And we came out here with the idea of looking at this, of building a school here in this facility. And I remember John Wazniewski said he'd think a little bit and he said, it'd be cheaper to tear it down and start all over. And he said, no, that's not an option at all. Not going to do that. But up on top of this building, of course, the cupolo here and that big clock that's up there, it hadn't functioned for years, but that was completely restored. And when I come back here and see this building and all the things that go on here and remember the horses that I treated in this barn and the things that I did on Longview Farm and growing up here, how blessed I am to be able to come back and to be able to have a part in something like this. Now, I can talk all day and I would, you know, those of you that know me know I love to talk. And I remember one time when I was in, 4H years ago, and I got elected as a county chairman of a 4H event and I got over to municipal auditorium and I was going to be in charge and I, I just absolutely spellbound, I couldn't talk at all. Fortunately, my leader took over until I finally got my voice. And my wife, I would tell that story and she said, well, he's never shut up since once he got his voice. So that's probably true. But I would, you know, welcome any questions that you all might have. But I, again, I am so appreciative of the fact that you have allowed me to come and speak. And Lee Summitt R7 district is unique. Not many school districts have the close relationship with the, with the city and with private enterprise like we do here. We have so many great things going that we do together. And then we are so blessed in this school district with the Education Foundation. I mean, one of the first education foundation meetings we ever had was right here in this building. When we used this building for quite a few things in the community at that time. And it so happened that Kim would remember this, that, you know, we had a fellow named Jim Knoll here in Lee Summitt. And Jim Knoll and his wife were both 1936 Lee Summitt High School graduates. And they had no children, no heirs. They were the last of the Knoll family. And they were a pretty wealthy family. They came from down in the Lone Jack area, but we introduced him to Cheryl and eventually were able to, he left land to the Lee Summitt Education Foundation that would translate into about $1.5 million. So that, that's one of the things that, you know, I think I still remember coming here to that, one of the original meetings of the foundation. But we used this building for a lot of things and certainly the old mansion has, had been used for a long, long time and still does. But I am proud to be a part of this community and I'm proud to say that I'm a 1948 graduate of Lee Summitt High School. And to be able to spend my life in this community and come back where I grew up and spend my life here has been a blessing to me. It's kind of self-reliant and you guys can kind of go through them and see if there's anything in there that'd be interesting to you at all. But I'm sorry, I didn't, technology-wise, I should have put it all on a, had it on a screen or something, but I didn't. But I ran through some old pictures of things I had there. One of the things that's in there, I think, is a picture of the Mrs. Combs on the first page, driving her horses. And then one of the things we had in downtown Lee Summitt that was really a stalwart thing there was this, what they called Chapman Dairy. It was down where Dairy Queen is right now. And then on the second page, there's a little old one-room country school that I started in Cyclone School. I bet you don't know where Cyclone School was. It was out on, on Colburn Road, yeah, as you go to, back to Missoura Town, there on Colburn, Cyclone School Road. Started in the first grade there. It's kind of interesting, in the, in the old days, in the school districts we had here, women could not be married and teach in the school system. women could not be married and teach in the school system. And that was true for a long period of time. Dr. Campbell used to always tell the story about, when I was in high school, we had a, a woman that, uh, taught English, the name of, she, her name was Bush. Her maiden name was Bush, and she came to Lee's Summit, was one of our teachers, and she got married the next year. She married a fellow by the name of Green. So, Dr. Campbell used to tell the story, said, "The Bush turned green, so I had to fire her." And, uh, I went to, uh, in Aaron Cedar Hill School up here, Hazel Smalley was our teacher here, and that's true, she was not married. And, uh, later on, one of the things you'll see in here, I think, is there's a, one of the teaching contracts that she had. With her, uh, we remained good friends all of her life, and when she passed away, her daughter gave me a lot of old mementos of her mom had. And I think that one of the teaching contracts she had, she got a hundred dollars a month for teaching, and then she got an extra five dollars if she'd fire the furnace and shovel us snow in the wintertime. And, uh, then, uh, we have had a, you know, I started and went to several of the little rural elementary schools around here, and I was at Greenwood at one time. And Greenwood, uh, School District, in the old days, had its own school system. And, uh, I think one of the oldest buildings we still use in this district is the old Greenwood Elementary School there. Part of that was a WPA project that was built a long, long time ago. But we had some pictures of, uh, of the Cedar Hill School and, you know, things like that. But anyway, I've talked too long. You guys, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
So, Dr. Ertsch, where was, where was, uh, Lee's Summit High when you graduated?
Okay, Miller, Miller Park.
Miller Park.
Miller Park. And in those days, we had a, uh, we were just across the railroad track from, from Harris Park, and all the athletic events were held over in Harris Park. We used to have, uh, you know, the kids would just, we'd leave school and go down and go across the railroad track and, you know, go up there, and, and, uh, that's where the football games were held, there were baseball games were played there. And, uh, we had, uh, I'll never forget, we had, uh, there was a big old water tower that stood right on the west side of the school district, uh, the school, high school there. We had, uh, some people that, uh, were a little bit rambunctious from time to time. We had a, the Buckson family, there were four Buckson boys that grew up here on Longview Farm, and Bob Buckson was always a troublemaker at school, and Dr. Campbell had a way of, uh, you know, kind of assessing things pretty well. And Bob Buckson crawled up on top of that old water tower there, right next to the school, and was, and walking around on the top of that. And I remember TF John was our principal, and he was so worried about that. And Dr. Campbell said, "Don't pay any attention to him, he'll come down when he gets hungry." He said, "We're gonna stop all the activities over on that side of the school, so nobody will even see him, what he's doing up there." And sure enough, you know, a long later in the afternoon, he did come down, and nobody said anything about it. But, uh, that was the kind of a person he was. But, but at Miller Park School was, uh, we had a vocational ag program in the college, in the vet, in the school there at that time, and I was pretty involved in FFA and voag, and I always knew I wanted to do something related to agriculture, and, you know, and I know that I never would be a veterinarian, but went to MU and they started a vet school about that period of time, and I decided, "This is what I want to do." And sixty-six later, years later, I'm back still in the same place I started and still doing the same thing. And I flunked retirement, so I still go into the office, and particularly since my wife passed away, I go in and get to see people and still treat some animals and treat some unusual things, and I still enjoy doing what I do. I look forward every day to, to going in, but, uh, I'm, there again, I am proud to be a Lee's Summit High School graduate. Other questions?
Bud, I know, uh, I know it isn't about this area, but you were the veterinarian for Kansas City Zoo for a long time. Can you tell them a little bit about your experience with the Kansas City Zoo, since you're here?
All right. When I, um, when I got out of, of school and came back here, the Kansas City Zoo was sort of a stepchild of the Kansas City Parks Department. They didn't have a very big budget to do very much with. But anyway, we, uh, started doing work, uh, uh, served as veterinarian for the Kansas City Zoo, and now we have a, a good fee structure at the zoo, and they have two full-time veterinarians in the zoo. But for twenty-two years, I served as a veterinarian for the Kansas City Zoo, and I've had some interesting experiences with the Kansas City Zoo. In those days, we had, you know, very limited resources to work with, and we had a zoo director by the name of Jack Armstrong and his wife Jan, and they were wonderful, wonderful people. And we've had some interesting things happen. We had a, had, uh, two female gorillas in the Kansas City Zoo, and we didn't have a male gorilla. So, we did, uh, a bunch of veterinarians, and, yeah, and you don't get trained on exotic animals in, in vet school, really. You just kind of learn. So, a bunch of us got together and formed what we call American Association of Zoo Veterinarians, and so you got acquainted with other people that were working in zoos doing this kind of work. So, we, I got acquainted with the veterinarian in the San Diego Zoo, and he said, "Well, if you can bring these female gorillas out to, uh, San Diego, and we'll keep them here until they're pregnant, and then we can send them back home." Well, we had a very limited budget. We did anything with, and one of the craziest things I ever did was, uh, we sedated, uh, two different times, we would sedate those, and we had a fellow that had a little six-passenger plane, and he took two of the seats out, and I sat in there with a, it was a seven-hour flight to San Diego. We had these gorillas, uh, one at a time, had them sedated, and then, uh, I had them on a stretcher right there, and that pilot told me, he said, "Now, I've got a thirty-eight. If you let one of them wake up, I may have to use that." But I'd have to give a little sedation every once in a while. Well, that worked out well. We took them out there and left them until they assured us that they were pregnant, and then we went back and got them. And I'll still remember, nothing stinks worse than a gorilla, anyway, and sitting in that little tight plane on the way back, and we got into some rough weather, and one of them got nauseated and started vomiting, and so we had about a seven-hour flight, and I'll never forget that, but we did that. And then, so the word got out that we needed a male gorilla in the Kansas City Zoo, so the McDonald's were just starting to develop then, so they said, "Well, we're gonna give you money enough to buy a male gorilla." So, we went to San Diego Zoo, and they had a young male, and we bought him and brought him back, and they named him Big Mac. And he was in the Kansas City Zoo for a long period of time. But, uh, I've had some interesting experiences in working with animals in the zoo. I remember the first day I was in practice, uh, and they called and said, "We've got a, a sick turtle." And I thought, "Well, you know, I was a kid growing up, I was used to land terriers running around out here everywhere and snapping turtles, and I don't think that would be any real challenge." I got over there, and what I found out when I got there was a Galapagos tortoise, and those things weigh about two-hundred pounds, they live forever. And, uh, this, I tried listening with a stethoscope, and I couldn't hear a thing through all that shell, and, and I was frustrated on what I was gonna do, and I tried to tell you temperature, and almost lost my finger trying to put a thermometer in his rectum. And so then, by that time, the keeper was taking care of him. I said, "Well, let's turn him over." And he said, "Turn him over? Why in the hell do you want to do that?" And I said, "Well..." He said, "I can tell you what's wrong with him." He said, "They left him out in the cold a couple nights, and he's got pneumonia. You see his eyes, you know, foaming and bubbing around the eyes and the nose." So, I learned right then, you know, you gotta pay attention to the people that take care of these animals. You can learn a lot just talking to them. So, I, I use that as an example of how, how stupid I was, and, you know, uh, every animal has an owner, and that's the thing you learn the most in veterinary medicine. You gotta like animals, but you have to like people, be able to communicate with people. That's the number-one thing. Any other questions? I've probably bored you guys too long now, anyway.
Bud, I have one for you.
Okay?
What do you want to see done with the dairy barns and manager's house that hasn't gotten done yet?
What do you think will be done?
What, what do you think should be done with them, besides obviously preserved?
Well, the fortunate thing about these buildings was that a building will, unless they've got a good roof on it, they deteriorate very rapidly. And these old, stock old roofs that are on, you know, last forever, so they're still pretty structurally sound. But there's been all kinds of speculation about what was gonna go in that building up here, whether it'd be a, you know, uh, retail businesses go in there, or what would go in it. And I'm not sure that I have the answer. Betty Eubanks, who lives here on, over off Sampson Road, has been a historian over the years, and she and I have talked many times about making sure that we hold the city, you know, accountable for making sure these, these are, are developed as such. But so far, it hasn't happened, and I, I don't have the answer for it. I wish I did. Yes?
What words of wisdom would you share with the current Board of Education on how to be a successful board?
I'm sorry, I, my hearing is not very good.
Bud, what words of wisdom would you like to share with the current Board of Education on how we can be successful?
Well, uh, I, I think being in education today and being on a Board of Education is much more difficult than it was when, when I was there. And I, I, uh, I have great admiration for all of you that are able to do that. But I think probably, uh, listening to the pulse of the community and knowing what your community, you know, expects and provide the very best education you can for all these kids. We are so blessed with, you know, some of the technology campus here. We've got so many great things in our district here that we need to be proud of, and we need to continue to focus on providing a quality education to every kid in this community. You know, we, public education has gone through a lot of turmoil. I don't have to tell you guys that. And, uh, it's sad to see some of the things that, uh, you know, I, I, I say I'm one of millions and millions of kids that, uh, have been a partial success, at least because of a good public education. And it's still the thing that, uh, that we need to hold near and dear. But being, listening to your community and trying to provide the best quality education and, and, uh, one thing I learned a long time ago is that, uh, and we were visiting Sunday at the class reunions, Dr. Russ Ritter, some of you may know Russ, uh, and I wasn't the oldest one there. Russ was, and I was the second or third oldest one there, I think, but he was a nineteen forty-four graduate of Lee's Summit. And I'll never forget, uh, he and I served on the school board together, and I have been so blessed over the years in having served with some great people. I mean, Bob Gorley and, you know, Bud Schaffler and people like that, and many people that are, are long gone now that, that served on the board. But I think of all of the public service things I ever did, serving on the Board of Education and having the satisfaction of helping, uh, provide a quality education for the kids in our community regardless of their need. We provide it for everybody. I think I still take more satisfaction out of that than anything I've ever done. Probably doesn't answer your question, but that's my thoughts.
That does answer my question. Bud, okay. Bud, I remember Tony Sandsbury, long before I came here, said, "I would go," I heard of your name before I ever came. He said, "I would never go buy a piece of property unless I took Bud with me, 'cause he would tell me if I'm getting a good deal, and if I wasn't, he would make sure it became a good deal." So, what, what land or spots where schools are at now that you help, uh, the district procure?
Well, uh, you know, it just so happened, I'd been around here a long time, and I, I knew a lot of people. Probably the, uh, the property over where Lee's Summit West is, is a good example, the Yost family owned that piece of land. And I had known the Yost family forever, and Howard Yost had been a very successful, uh, fellow in the furniture business in Kansas City, and they had accumulated quite a bit of land there. And, uh, so when he died, and, and we were looking for a place for another high school, I contacted his son, who I knew well, and he said, uh, they talked to their attorney, and he said, "Yeah, we can, uh..." I think that land was appraised at, at that time, like fifteen thousand dollars an acre. And so, they sold it to the district for about one-third of what, simply because they wanted to do something for the district. We had occasion to do that on, I can think of three other instances on some land that in the district and that we knew about, that, uh, people were willing to help, uh, you know, contribute. One of the things that I was not successful in, and I still remember when Karen Messerly was the mayor here in town, and the Mormon Church, as you know, owns three thousand acres of land in the city limits of Lee's Summit. What other town has three thousand acres of land that's still being farmed in the city limits of Lee's Summit, or city limits of their town? And, uh, but Karen Messerly, I met with the Mormon Church, and we were trying to get them interested in giving some land for a police station, a fire station, and possibly a school. And they were very frank with us and said, "You know, we bought this, so it's, and we'll sell it when it's to the greatest advantage for our church," and that's exactly what has happened. Now, over the years, the Line River Land north of Lee's Summit, they bought eleven hundred dollars an acre. The land between here and going back to two ninety-one, uh, they bought for about twenty-four hundred dollars an acre. The city has put improvements in, the infrastructure and everything, and now it's worth a fortune. But they are ready to start developing it. So, I think you're gonna see some tremendous growth as a result of that. But, uh, if, if I had my doubts about where we're going to be, it's going to be that we need to focus on, in Lee's Summit, which we need to do more of, of more commercial development, residential, you know, as we know, is unfortunately, we, we have a pretty high percentage of RSS valuation is residential. Good example of what happened when Western Electric Plant came in here in nineteen sixty-six, and, and we were a town of two thousand, they came in in sixty-six, and they didn't get any tax abatement or anything. They came in and built that, and we had enough income from that one facility there alone that we built Westview School and, you know, built a number of things from that. So, uh, we've got to be, you know, continue to work with this, this, the, uh, city and to try to get things developed and, and commercial. We still have, Lee's Summit is still pretty much a commuting town. We don't have that much, uh, you know, jobs in, in commuting here, people going into the city, and so we need to focus on that. Others?
What is the legacy that you would like to be remembered for?
Oh, gosh. I, I, I don't have any legacy and everything. I'm just blessed, and I have, uh, five kids that all went through and got a great, uh, education here in the school system. My grandchildren went to school, most of them here in Lee's Summit. Now, I have, uh, have ten grandchildren, have fifteen great-grandchildren. I have, uh, quite a few people in my family that are in education. All of you know Chad, of course, my grandson, but, but I have some people that, members of my family that teach in other districts now, have a grandson that, that teaches at Holden and, and coaches down there. I, uh, guess, uh, my grandkids are my legacy. And I, uh, let me tell you, there's, if you aren't aware, Lee's Summit has a lot of history. And, uh, I am so proud of the Lee's Summit Historical Museum we have. If you haven't been there, go, go look through it. We've got a lot of Longview things in there, but we also have John Walkenberry, when he was, uh, principal at Lee's Summit, uh, High School, uh, he was on a committee that we all planned things, and we now include the history of Lee's Summit in the history curriculum that we teach in the Lee's Summit school system now. So, people need to know about history. We learn from history and, and support that museum. That's, uh, we were fortunate, the voters in this, at Lee's Summit overwhelmingly approved spending money to refurbish the old post office, which I knew when I was a kid growing up, the old post office. That's now the education of, of the Historic Museum right across from the depot, and we're constantly raising money to help support that and keep it going. But that's one of the great things. I, number of years ago, I said something to one of my sons about, I said, "You're, I, I really like history, I'm more..." And he said, "Dad, did you ever think that's because you're getting so damn old you are a part of history?"
Well, Bud, I don't want to keep being longer. I thank you so much. And I, as someone who moved to the community a couple of years ago, thank you for being so kind to me, to my wife, you give her hugs when she comes to vet clinic. Lord knows, we have fifteen pets, so we give a lot of money to the vet clinic. Uh, but I thank you so much. You're, you're a treasure to listen to, and I appreciate you coming to share with us today.
Thank you for having me.